Planning and zoning commission meeting. I will call the meeting to order and ask for approval of the June 9 minutes. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion passed. City council liaison report. Councilman Maroni.
Yes.
Waying back.
Waying back here, yes. Good evening. Last Monday, the council did meet for the regular scheduled council meeting. Pretty light agenda. Some things for your consideration for just to know about is we did have a public works employee resign. They moved out of the area. And with that, we did, the personnel committee and staff interviewed applicants. And we actually are moving forward with offering and they've accepted for two hires. The reason we did two is we do have a pending retiree in a few more months. So this will be adequate enough for training and be able to train both employees at the same time and cut down some time savings there. We also discussed some of the latest news regarding tax forfeited lands. With that, we directed staff to potentially secure some for future development for the city purposes. That will be at the county live public auction next Friday. And then we did also authorize a dock purchase. This is to replace the public landing here just directly east of city hall. With that, we had a very generous donation from the Pelican Lakes Conservation Club, an amount of $10,000. We also secured a source well grant in excess over $1,200. So these were funds granted to us there for that. So that should hopefully be in the next week or so for that. Other than that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? If not, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is open forum number one. If anyone would like to speak, please come to the podium. Introduce yourself, indicate where you reside. Anyone like to speak? If not, I will close open forum number one and move to the next agenda item, which is a request to replant lots five, four, five, and six copper root addition to Breezy Point, zone residential two. I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant if he or she would like to make a presentation. Can it please introduce itself?
Cindy, if you would, I'm representing my client and the application of the sub-division. My client has requested that we reconfigure the lots. There's not any new number of lots, but there will be three lake shore lots instead of two lake shore lots and a back lot. So that's my change. But now lot six is not repairing. Lots five, we have repairing or are repairing lots. The new subdivision will have re-repairing lots. They have plenty of lake shore, plenty of residential area. There's water sewer, or sewer, I'm sorry, all the way already in place and access as well.
Tracy?
One question I have is why do we have all this title insurance stuff in the package?
It's a mistake that it's in your package, quite frankly.
Oh, okay. So there's no reason to have it in.
There's no reason to have it, it's.
I had to figure that.
Other questions, Tracy?
Yeah, I do have a couple. First of all, I could not even with magnifying glasses read the note on what will be block one up at the top of the plot. Can you tell me what says up there? I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, where you have pre-designated lot six into a lake shore lot. And as I see it, it looks like it's shown on like on lot one.
So each lot has a little bit of lot six included into it?
Yeah, yeah. But it.
Tracy, I think what you're referring to is existing drainage and utility easement according to document number 249213.
And then on the, what is shown on my plot plan on one of these assists, I think it's plot two, there are a bunch of notes way up in the corner, 50 foot, 30 foot road, something.
Is that in the middle of the lot?
No, it's right up at the, at the north, north end of the lot. It has an arrow to the, I guess, the lot line. Looks like 30 foot road right away to the back to pick it up. I think that's where it says.
So that's the building of the original lot build thirty feet?
Okay, I see, all right. I forgot, one other, a couple of questions, so I go ahead and ask.
Sure.
There's quite a slope down from, from the major portion of the back lot down to the roadway. Is that slope appropriate for a driveway?
Well, it doesn't exceed your bluff or the terminology for the bluff.
But can, can you put a drive from the access road up that bluff into a structure on the north, so-called half of the lot?
Off of North Lakeview Drive or off of.
Yes, off of North Lakeview Drive.
Yes.
You can.
Yes, and then to get down to the lake shore, there is, or to the lake portion of it, there is that 40 foot wide ingress and egress easement and driving surface. And that's where the sewer lines are as well, that's where the utility drainage easement is.
Okay, and if I understand it correctly, there is no access from lots one, two, and three to Weaver's Point Road?
Correct. I mean, I'm assuming that's from the original.
It's a private easement.
Yeah.
And the access was not approved, there were no accesses approved off of Weaver Point Road.
What would keep someone that has one of those lots from putting their own ATV trail in there? From Weaver's Point Road into there?
They would not have permission to use a private Weaver's Point Road.
So who would, who would enforce that?
The, the owners of that easement. The adjacent property owners, I believe it's Mr. Smith and goes all the way down to.
So it would be their responsibility to enforce the easement?
Yes.
Okay.
I have no further questions. What?
No questions, but I commend you on the creative redesign in order to make all three lots lake accessible.
Marcy?
No questions.
Carter?
No.
I will thank you for your presentation. Yes, in, in just a moment, Tim. Before the public input, Tim, I'm going to ask Jerry for his staff review.
Staff review is very short. Basically, the, the original copper root addition was approved in 2017. It was a six lot subdivision, five lots on the lake and one off lake lot. The owner is concerned that the off lake lot may not be very marketable and is proposing that lots four, five, and six be replanted into three lake shore lots. The reconfigured lots conform to the minimum lot size as required in the zoning ordinance for the R2 area and will be served by municipal sewer and a private roadway.
Any questions to Jerry? Next would be public input. Tim, would you?
Well, yeah, the question I have is please.
Could you, could you come up to the, introduce yourself?
Yeah, my property is right next door to lot number five. And I'm wondering, I heard you say that you would add three into two. And I heard you say that all three lots will have access to the lake because there are only two of the two lots there, correct?
Could you?
Today, there are, they're taking two lots that are lake shore lots.
Correct.
Plus the one offshore lot.
Correct.
Combining them to make three lake shore lots.
Right, but will there be, there will be still three lots?
There will still be three lots, three, no, all three of them have lake shore.
Lot number six will now have lake shore? Lot number six is created, six is going away.
Right, okay, six is going away, it's combined with the other two.
Okay.
To form three. Now, if we, if we could take that slide and, there you go. That's the reconfiguration today.
Six is really not going away, it's being.
Absorbed.
No, there's still going to be six lots. There's still going to be six lots. The sixth lot originally did not have lake shore.
Correct.
They're making two lots into three lots, slipping it all the way through. And the two lots that are giving up, giving up that shoreline are going to have space behind.
Okay. There will be six.
There will be six lots.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, please.
This is probably not what I'm talking about here, but I'm making a call on story two. Just wondering, is there any ordinance on this area at all? Is there any kind of ordinance? I mean, do they, can you put up a $250,000 house? I mean, you know, is there any ordinance? I don't even know what these lots are set for, so maybe somebody can help me on that.
Jerry, could you answer that question?
I'll try. We, this area has a minimum house size, something that we'll probably be discussing later on in this meeting. The, the minimum house size is at least 26 feet wide and 1,296 square feet without a garage. It can be a minimum of 975 square feet, 26 feet wide, with at least a 22 by 22 attached garage. That is the minimum size that is required by the ordinance. Now, if there are some covenants that say, internal covenants or deed restrictions that require architectural review or something like that, that is something that's strictly between the buyer and the seller. The city has some minimum sizes and that's all that we enforce. Of course setbacks and wetlands and those type of things.
Jerry, how about outbuildings?
They are allowed to put an accessory building up to, they need a primary structure first, number one. Once the primary structure is there, they can have a 1,280 square foot accessory structure. If they were to apply for a conditional use permit, they could go up to 1,600 square feet for an accessory structure. But that's the maximum size that's allowed in that zoning.
Does that answer your question?
Would anyone else like to speak? If not, I will close the public hearing and move to our next agenda item, which is official action on this request. I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to prove it. I would think it's.
Do you have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion. Not, I'll call the question, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The chair also opposes. Motion passed. Next on our agenda is public hearing, vacancy applications. Steve and Debbie Sinclair, Lake Shore Drive, request to increase volume of legal non-conforming structure residential two. I will open that public hearing and ask the applicant if they would like to make a presentation.
Hi, I'm Steve Sinclair. This is my activity. Just to give you a little background, we moved up here in December this year. So at that time, we became full-time residents up here. Also talking about summer cabin, so full-time residents. Property is located on Goose Bay on Pelican Lake. And just to give you an idea of the neighborhood, we have, we have a house on one side of us, we have a lot on the other side of us, we have a house behind us and next to that house are two bigger lots. There's just one house right next to our property. We're in the process of updating the property, it needs a new road, it needs a new side of it. And as we're doing some of that processing, we learned that our house is a non-conforming property because it does have proper setback on one of the sides of the house. It's setback in front of the building, the road, one side or the other side, it's right on the property, I guess. The house was built in the seventies and, but is indeed updated. So that's, that's where, so that's why we're here for the variance request. As from what I understand, it wouldn't require a variance ordinarily, but because it is on the property, it requires variance. So what we're doing, what we want to do is on the front of the house, there's an unusual style balcony that comes off the block, it's on the second floor. And that balcony needs replacing. Yeah, that's a picture of it there. It's kind of a Swiss style balcony, I guess you'd say, I don't know. It's kind of, it's a little different. But one of the boards is completely missing, some of those poles are rotting. And our contractor looked at it and said, yeah, it really shouldn't be repaired, it's not safe. So what we're looking to do is replace it with a shed roof, which is just kind of an angled roof that will go over that instead of having that balcony there. And then as part of that, we would increase the width of the deck that's underneath it to match the shed roof above it. Part of the reason for removing the balcony also is it's kind of like, it's got, it's like a deck where it's got spaces in between the boards. It's going in the hogs, it fills with snow and dirt, we noticed this year, plenty of, plenty of snow we got. And when the spring came along, it would melt and grip on your head as you're walking in the door as well. So it just doesn't make sense in this climate to have that style of a balcony up there. If you look around the houses around us tonight and I look down the streets, all of them have kind of some kind of overhang that goes over their, their entryway. So if you're walking in your house, you're not hitting that. And that's what we're kind of proposing is to put that over there and then expand the deck just for symmetry and for utilization of the size of the deck. We're not pushing it out in further towards the street, we're simply going along the front of the house. And I think it's over another six feet or something like that, just so it sits, so you got the overhang and then the deck matches the size of the overhang. If you go to, can you go to the next, next picture there? That's kind of what it would look like. You'd have a kind of a shed roof there with some pillars and a deck underneath it, a couple of steps going up to it. Second thing we're doing is, and that's on the street side, the other change we're making is on the lakeside. There was a building that was added on to the back of the garage and it was poorly constructed. The inside roof balls, there was mice inside there this winter. There's, the woodpeckers have gotten the siding and there's balls and stuff. So we had that taken down just for safety reasons. We didn't feel it was maybe useless as well. And what we would like to do is extend, you can kind of see the roof there stops where that shed roof, where that shed is. What we'd like to do is just extend the roof out where the shed was. So basically replacing the roof where the shed was, an extension. All in all, it increases the hard cover, whatever you call it, the impervious cover in the front about 48 square feet and in the back about 48 square feet. So about around 100 square feet of additional impervious cover, which still keeps us within a lot of impervious coverage in this little flat. I guess I don't, I think overall, just in general, we're just, of course it's a property as it is, we're just trying to address some of these design issues in a way that helps the house get better into the neighborhood.
This is not a really important question, Steve, but I'm just curious, would you replace the door that goes out onto that deck with a window then, eliminate it?
I have a question. So I assume this work shed was like a separate structure. Are you putting any kind of flooring or anything beneath it? Is it just going to be ground cover?
Yeah, that's a good question. They have put a concrete floor in there separate and so now there's, in fact, I can show you, there's a, I wrote a picture. Here's the concrete floor.
Okay.
That's kind of what it looks like.
That was a previous to you, huh?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's just kind of a vehicle.
So you're going to extend the concrete then, or?
No, we'll just leave it where it is.
Okay, then just do that, right?
Yeah, and we're just thinking of putting the roof over it and just making some seating areas and maybe something to put some wood, you know.
Probably look good.
And that, that part kind of looks out on the water.
Yeah. Kind of a covered deck thing or works or something?
Yeah, it'd be kind of, it'd be covered, but it'd be okay.
Yes, thank you.
I think that would look good.
The house has a screen porch, it won't be bad. It's not a deck, it's around the corner, so it just kind of either does this or just get it covered up. And that would help with snow and rain too.
Correct.
Kind of keep it away from the side of the house a little bit.
Any questions at this point? Nope. Thank you very much. Jerry, would you give us your staff review?
Again, this, the address is 29, or 29790 Lake Shore Drive, Breezy Point. The area is zone R2. This area is serviced by municipal sewer. The request is to expand legal non-conforming use by constructing a covered deck and expand the roof line to the south. The property, the lot is 25,792 square feet in area with an existing dwelling and attached garage. The dwelling and the, and the garage are located within the required setbacks from Pelican Lake. The structure is considered a legal non-conforming use because it does not conform to side yard setbacks. The dwelling was built in the 1960s with additions on, in the seventies. There also was a variance that was granted in 1984 to, for the garage to be less than 30 feet from the right of way line, I think it's 28, if I'm not mistaken. The dwelling was built on two lots and encroached on an adjacent lot. A legal arrangement was made at some time to clear up the encroachments. Actually had to buy two feet of property to clear the encroachment on the, the next lot. And thus we have the legal non-conforming use. Zone residential, R2, serviced by sewer. Normal setbacks are 30 feet from the right of way, 75 feet from the OHW. Side yard setbacks 10 and 15. Impervious coverage 25 percent and the building height maximum 25 feet. The impervious coverage today is about 13 percent. This proposal would move that to approximately 14 percent. Still within the 25 percent that is the maximum. Variance review, variances are to be decided within a reasonable time with a consideration for the following. The strict interpretation of the ordinance would be impractical because of circumstances related to lot size, shape, topography, or other characteristics of the property not created by the landowner. The deviation from the ordinance will be, with any attached conditions, will still be in keeping with the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. The land was created by, variance is permitted in the zoning district where the property is located. The variance will not alter the essential character of the locality and the variance is not for economic reasons alone, but reasonable use of the property does not exist under the ordinance. The variance is not for economic reasons. City attorney is advised that the board of adjustment may issue a variance from section 15007, provided the variance meets the practical difficulties test under Minnesota statutes 462.357, subdivision six, subdivision two. The following findings are provided for the board discussion in relation to the approval of variance request. The alleged practical difficulty is due to aesthetics and water conditions. No other location exists on the property in which the expansion can meet all the provisions of the ordinance. The property is located in an area of mostly legal non-conforming uses which are serviced by municipal systems. With reasonable conditions placed on it, the variance stays in character of the neighborhood. Single-family dwelling is an allowed use in R2 zone and the property owner has proposed Single-family dwelling is in allowed use in R2 zone, and the property owner has proposed to use this property in a reasonable manner consistent with those debt properties within the area. The following findings of fact may be used to support denial of a variance request. The commission finds no practical difficulty and the continued use of the existing structures provide for reasonable use of the property. The property owner is not deprived of his rights but would be deprived of their desires. Planning Commission direction, the planning, the board may by resolution choose to approve or deny the request variance. Resolution clearly state the reasons for approval or denial of the variance. If approved, the, the staff recommends that a building permit needs to be obtained and that because of the close proximity to the neighbor and the runoff onto the neighboring property, gutters should be considered to be placed on the building with downspouts directing the water away from the, the neighboring property.
Thank you, Jerry. Any questions of, Jerry? If not, I will ask if anyone would like to speak to this request. If not, I will close the public hearing and move to take official action on this request, and I would entertain a motion.
I would remove, uh, removing the structure for this variance. Based on, it's going to make it a lot nicer. Just detract from the neighborhood and, and no other location exists on the property in which, anyway, it complies with those terms as far as I understand. We vote to re-approve it.
So your motion would incorporate Jerry's recommendations?
Sure.
I would second Tracy's motion, which would include the staff recommendations for the building permit and the gutters.
Okay. We have a motion and a second discussion.
I think it'll look good.
Looks very nice.
Yeah.
We'll call the question then. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose the same? Motion passed. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a review of zoning land use comparisons. As we discussed at our last meeting, we're going to have a couple of agenda items like this on the agenda, at least in the near future. We're starting with this one, correct, Jerry?
Whatever you say. I mean, that is the reason it's on the agenda, right? The, the intent is to start a discussion about minimum house size and minimum lot size. At the, we had a short discussion at the last meeting, and the direction I got from you folks was to put together a spreadsheet that basically showed where the minimum house size and where that came into play, and also a comparison to minimum lot sizes in those same zoning areas. As you can see from the, uh, the spreadsheet, most of the areas, except for the R3 and the R4, require a minimum house size of at least twenty-six feet wide, twelve-hundred-and-ninety-six square feet, or nine-seventy-five with at least a twenty-two by twenty-two attached garage. I, I think the question is, is this requirement in the ordinance something that takes away from affordability of, of housing? Is it something that is excessive? Or is it, maybe it's not big enough? I, I honestly don't know the answer to that question. But it was something that came up in the comp plan discussions about how do we make housing more affordable? And this is one of the issues that was zeroed into as far as something that may or may not be making it affordable. Does the city of Breezy Point want to go with something smaller? Do they want to go with something bigger? Does the city think that this minimum requirement is a good requirement? Is it adequate the way it is? I think that's where the discussion starts and basically goes.
And am I correct, Jerry and Patrick, that the input we did receive in the comprehensive planning is that this may impact affordability? We didn't have other input like the square footage should be greater.
I, I don't think we got the input from, from folks. I think that the staff basically looked at this and said, this may be one of the reasons, or maybe one of the areas that we need to look at as far as affordability is concerned. There certainly has been no lack of interest within the last four months in the city of Breezy Point. There, there's a lot of activity going on here. There's a lot of building going on. We, I think of the questions that I've answered to folks, the only time that the twelve-ninety-six or nine-five, nine-seventy-five has been a negative had been when somebody wants to consider a tiny house. And really, there isn't any place in this, this ordinance at all that allows something like that. So I, I don't know if it's, it's taking away from affordability. I, I suspect that the nine, or the twelve, twelve-ninety-six may, I don't know about the nine-seventy-five. I'm doing some work in another community right now that the nine-seventy-five is the, is the minimum.
And have you, have you seen other surrounding cities, townships around Breezy Point move towards a smaller footprint?
I haven't, I haven't seen that at all, quite frankly.
So not in Cross Lake or, you know?
I wonder if the question could be more appropriate to be asked, do we even know what the other cities' minimum sizes are around us?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, thank you.
I do, I, I have not looked into that, quite frankly.
And when, a little amount I was involved with the comprehensive plan, it seemed to me there was a sense that a lot of people wanted, quote, more affordable housing. But I never heard any specific comments about the square footage being too small or anything like that. A lot of it had more to do with building codes and do you have to, do you have to plaster the basement ceiling and, you know, some things building codes require. And, and as I looked through the comprehensive plan and thinking about this session, I, I'm of the opinion that maybe it ain't broke, so why should we try to fix it? Now, that's my sense.
Do we have an idea of how many requests come in for a smaller size? Is there a demand for the tiny house at this point in time?
We haven't, very seldom.
But twelve-ninety-six is the footprint, so if you built a two-story house, you got twelve-ninety-six first floor, twelve-ninety-six basement, twelve-ninety-six upstairs, right?
Right.
Sorry? So that gets to be a pretty good sized house. About seven-sixty-seven, six-seventy-six is only twenty-six by twenty-six. That's pretty small. I mean, it's not.
I think you have to look at the, the, where those six-seventy-sixes are located. Those are basically very, very small lots.
Right.
They're typically eight thousand square feet or less.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of those lots are, are serviced by Municipal Sewer, some are not.
That's right.
Do we know, Jerry, how many buildable lots are in R3 and R4?
I can't tell you. In, in R4, I can tell you that there are very few.
Okay.
In the R3, there's quite a few. I think many of the tax forfeited folks are, the lots that are out there are in, in the R4 district.
In the R3?
In the R3, I'm sorry. The, the R3 is also someplace where if it's sewed, you can get down to ten thousand square feet. If it's unsewed, you need at least sixteen. It says twenty on here, and that's, that's what the, the ordinance quotes, but there is something in the ordinance that allows it to go down to, to eighty percent of that if in fact it can meet all setbacks.
Setback and sewer, huh?
And that's, I think you almost need the twenty thousand or the sixteen thousand square feet in order to support the house to well in the septic.
I'd be curious to know what some of the other minimums are from the surrounding cities and townships.
I can get that to you for next meeting.
Also, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to discussing something that was more of an efficiency style of housing, slab upgrade or what have you, full basement with a single stall oversized attached garage as opposed to the twenty-two, twenty-two by twenty-two minimum. Not necessarily to increase the density of the housing, because I think a lot of the people who live up here enjoy the rural feel where you still have your space. But this might accommodate an aging demographic as opposed to, you know, making them fit that footprint or having nine-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet plus the twenty-two by twenty-two attached garage.
I think one, just a comment about that, I think one of the things that, that I see quite often is oversized garages. And we want a smaller house, but we want an oversized garage.
Yes.
I think, just the opposite of what you, what you're thinking as far as living quarters are concerned. And the next thing that comes about, if you, if my garage is too small, then I have to have an accessory structure. And it, it just compounds itself. And it seems like if you build it, you fill it.
Would you say that the smaller living area and the larger garage would be because of the RVs or boats or, you know, those, I guess not primary sources of transportation? That is a reason?
I call them toys.
Right.
I, most folks that are, are in a single-family dwelling have a minimum of two cars. Most folks want those two cars in the, in the garage. The twenty-two by twenty-two is not a very big garage. And the snow blower and the, the ATV and the, the, the lawnmower just about take the rest of it.
I can agree with that.
Jerry, do you know how and why the twenty-six minimum width was established?
Oh, I think that was back in the seventies, and I think it was done to eliminate mobile homes in residential neighborhoods. Typically, you got a, a mobile home back in the seventies, you were at the most sixteen feet wide. If, that was, that was usually a double at that time, but, you know, a twelve. And the, the conflict between the single-family dwellings and the, the mobile homes just didn't work. And many, many communities in the seventies did something very similar to this.
Any other questions, comments?
So all the areas that are the original R3s or anything you build there is, only takes a ten thousand square foot lot.
As long as it's sewed.
Sewed, right. And there's a fair number of those sitting around yet, I think.
Yeah, there, there are.
I mean, here and there you'll see them.
The central.
Right.
Mostly. You see some activities happening behind us over here, between the city hall and the gates. That seemed to have, have picked up some interest in the last couple of years. I think there's three or four homes that are going in there right now. There's a little bit of it going on south of the traditional golf course. There's some of that happening, well, actually around the traditional golf course, even on the west side of, of County Road Four. And then you see quite a bit of it up in here on the other side of the airport.
So the tax forfeit lots, the numbers have dropped, haven't quite a bit?
What's happened is though, when I arrived here, there were three-hundred-and-fifty-three identified tax forfeit lots. Within the six months, what the county did is consolidate them into groupings.
Oh, okay.
So I think there's like three-hundred-and-fifty, let's call it that number.
Many of those R3 zone lots were less than eight thousand square feet.
Right. You couldn't build them if they were in the sewer.
So you, you, without the sewer, you couldn't use those lots. So they needed to be consolidated with another lot, an adjacent lot, and a lot of that is happening. There are some folks that have also picked up adjacent lots from existing, that have existing structures on one lot and picked up the adjacent ones. Slowly, they're becoming less and less.
Chrissy, anything?
Uh, no. No.
Okay. I guess we'll continue to ponder this.
I'll, I'll add something to this for your next meeting that, that shows some adjacent communities.
No.
Yes, sir.
If I could add, ask, or add to the survey, I'm not sure what the right location is. When I look at our neighbors, we'll just call it Olive Crook County, Breezy Point has always built more homes than the rest of the county, almost always. So to look at them, that might not be the right answer. I'm not sure what the right, that's why I asked to bring the question, but I hate to look at the redheaded stepchild when we don't know they're the right thing to look at.
I think from an information standpoint, it's, it's information. We, just because somebody else does it doesn't mean that Breezy has to do it. But I, I think since you've asked the question, we can certainly provide that information for you.
We can limit it though, Jerry. You can go Cross Lake, Pequot, Jenkins, you know, anyone that's sharing a border with us directly. You don't have to go down to Merrifield and Nisswa. They're, you know, they're, I think they're far enough separated from us. I'm just looking at the immediate sense, the, the close proximity.
Yeah, I don't think we were going to go to, to Carlton County or anything like that, quite frankly. I think we were going to use some common sense in when we did it.
The issue, what we're trying to ultimately accomplish is to somehow get the small tax forfeited lots somehow together so they become a buildable lot and that, and that we allow them to build a lot, a house that will fit on that. And, I mean, we're, I don't know, I don't know what our other objective is, is to, other than to get rid of all the tax forfeited lots, combined make sure that all lots are at least smart enough to build on, and then you can build.
If, if that's the objective, and, and many, many of the tax forfeited lots are Zoned R3. There you can build up to six hundred-and-seventy-six square feet. All you need is a twenty-six by twenty-six house, quite frankly. So... So it's the larger lots that we have the larger requirements as far as square footage is concerned.
But when you get to the larger lots, isn't there a tendency to want to have bigger homes put on the larger lot?
You would think so.
Instead, it's a garage? So what's our objective?
I just keep thinking, I remember somewhere and somebody making the comment that the required square footage may be a factor in housing affordability. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. I remember that comment being made.
I think we as staff may have made it.
Oh, okay.
You know, you're looking for how to do different things. I think we have made that, we may have made that statement. We didn't say it was or wasn't, but it may be there.
And now we're trying to determine if that is the situation.
Well, at least, it seems to me that that's a factor in our consideration of this.
But the affordability, yeah, if you listed houses for sale in Breezy Point that were new construction for 150,000, sure, they'd fly off the shelves like hotcakes. But new construction can still be built and sold under 250,000, and I know this from personal experience. So the criteria in my bills is meeting the current city requirements. So I don't know what type of affordability you're trying to figure out. I don't want to get that part.
Just a comment. I think affordability comes from land costs, building costs, size of building. And right now, we're in a time when we've never seen interest rates at 3%. 3% interest rates are causing the house size to go up just because of the affordability of it, the interest rates. People are able to build bigger structures and have the same payment as they would have with a smaller structure three years ago. Even though the building prices, the materials and everything went up, the interest rate has gone down so drastically.
But land cost has gone up also, isn't it?
I would, I wouldn't say so much on the tax forfeited parcels.
Oh, no.
But yes, the private sales, yes, those are up. A private sale parcel, franchise will go 15,000 to 20,000 as opposed to a tax forfeit that is half the cost. Same size. So, but those will eventually run out. And when they do, then private sales will take over and market will adjust to accommodate the consumption of those, or the sellers will drop their prices. So, I don't know.
I think that's one of the reasons why I include lot sizes in this chart, because I think land costs are part of that. And we have minimum lot sizes going all the way down from 10,000 square feet to two and a half acres, to five acres and 10 acres. Those may be part of the affordability formula, too.
Much of the discussion that I was partying to during the corporate land discussions with respect to affordability had probably more to do with affordability to the wage level of employees working in the service industry in this area. And there's a sense that if you worked in, at the resort or you worked in any of the tourist industries in this area, you couldn't afford to live in Breezy Point. You had to live in this faraway terrain or Pine River or somewhere else. And I think that was an issue being raised by some of those people that were concerned about it.
Just to expand on that a little bit, I think also it was not only talking about owner occupied, but it was also talking about rental and the lack of a rental market here.
If I recall Tracy during that meeting, two or three of the business owners indicated that they were actually having to buy homes and rent it to their property, their employees.
So is it a home affordability issue or a lack of rentals that's really being asked for this? It comes down to affordability. If we're not getting requests for, to build smaller homes on here, then I wouldn't say that there's a demand for it. But if the issue is that people want to live here, but they don't want to necessarily buy, they want to rent, there's no rentals.
And do we know that? Are there less rentals in Breezy?
Should remind the planning commission that you guys did modify the city code this year, I want to say, or last year, I'm sorry, to allow rentals in the commercial zoning industry. So you did take some of those comments back to try to make it an option. But to know what is a factor, Joe?
Do we, do we know, in fact, that there are more rentals in Pine River, Jenkins Township, or?
I would around Pequot. You'll see, there's a lot of apartments in Pequot.
I know there was a workforce housing study done. Pequot had a lot, other areas didn't have a lot. Brainerd, Baxter did, but I don't recall that they had specifically inventory of all the rental housing.
Anything else on this subject?
Where are you going to go next?
Pardon me?
Where are you going to go next? Where are we going next?
On the agenda?
Are we, no, are we just going to?
Oh, on which item or which topic?
No, just, we haven't come to a conclusion. And I don't expect to come to a conclusion, but what kind of conclusion are we trying to come to?
Mr. Chair, if I could just, that's me, sorry. Been quiet all this time, right? You know, it's interesting to hear the conversation revolving around, you know, affordability, size of homes, and then we started getting into the rental homes. One thing that just kind of came to my mind is what can we do as a planning and zoning commission to have rental homes? And I don't know if it's up to us unless it comes down to the size because of affordability, but you still need the developer to come in or somebody to come in to purchase these homes or to build them and then to actually want to be in the rental business. That's a decision, you know, for long-term rentals. I know we have the resort here, we have short-term rentals, we have timeshares, but to find owners or somebody who wants to be a landlord for multiple homes, that's the question of do they need requirement of the smaller homes and be more affordable? Or is it just the lack of, nobody wants to be a landlord here in Breezy Point? Just a question that kind of popped in my head is how does the P and Z here help to bring a renter into town? That just got my mind thinking here.
I think, I think Michael's absolutely right, that if, in fact, the market is such, there will eventually become a developer that will come in and try to do the rental market. We thought there was going to be a, the Benskis were going to do the project up on top of Hill by the clinic. That has fallen through. I think that that option is still available, but I think a developer has to determine whether the market is good enough for him to get his feet wet, quite frankly.
Do we know, did they just determine that there was a market?
I don't know what went into their decision not to build that building. Typically, they don't share those things with cities. Those are decisions that are made behind closed doors. Unfortunately, ours are in front of, the doors are open. But the market will eventually catch up with that. And if there's, if there's a market here, private industry will fulfill that niche. Now, we might get asked to help in some ways. Maybe it's utilities, maybe it's land costs, maybe it's rezoning something. That's kind of what happened with the clinic property, that we changed the ordinance to allow apartments in that area. You've done some things to help that along. Evidently, the private industry hasn't figured out that the market is here yet. We think it's here. We've heard it's here, but nobody's been willing to put the dollar on the table and say, I'm going to do it. And that's what it takes, is somebody to make the investment.
An article that was in the paper the other day about some guy coming in to buy 60 lots, I believe, I don't remember the whole wording on it. That was just a rumor, wasn't it? I don't know.
No, he existed.
He did.
He was from St. Cloud, yes.
Do we have an economic council as part of these meetings that look at expansion? You know, like Brainerd has Bladeck, that they're, part of their mission is going out and finding those holes and seeking people to come fill them. Because I can say from my personal life aspect, kids is getting asked on a almost daily basis about rentals in the area, and not short-term rentals, but actually people wanting to rent something. So it seems like there's a need. I don't know why there's a lack of rental options, if that's.
To answer one of your questions, the city does belong to Bladeck as one of the top five contributors.
Okay.
Michael, you were going to say something, I think.
Yes, making sure. Two more quick observations as discussion kept on going on. For, one example is where I live, Cultisack, had seven homes. Three of those were rentals. And when the interest rates became lower, the affordability of being able to continue to rent or to sell those, it became advantageous for those renters, the landlords, if I would, to sell their homes and actually profit as a one-time, because people now can afford to buy the homes. They didn't want to do the landlord portion of it anymore, so they're able to sell it as a one-time thing. And people can now, with the interest rates that they are, afford to actually purchase the home. That was one observation. But when we did have the Bezinskis here talking about the apartment complex, one thing did kind of settle in with me, though, is younger generations don't want to own something. They want to be able to rent something, and when they're done with it or done in that area, they move on to the next. I don't want to say short time, but they're definitely not here for the long term. And that's what the adventures of the apartment complex would potentially do is that some younger generations that don't want to own and maintain something, they can have something nice still that's maintained by somebody else, and they can move on to the next. Similar to your leasing of a vehicle. You don't have ownership in it. It's nice, it's new, you have it. But when you're done with it, you move on to the next thing. And that was kind of an interesting statement that they made that kind of resonated with me about the younger generations with that.
Now, Marcy's point, I think, is an interesting one. Is, can we be effective or is it our role to be that link between the employers who are telling us that there's a big need for workforce housing? And I think your point of, is perhaps Bladeck the appropriate link with those employers?
Mr. Chairman? I think that if we had somebody coming into the, to the office that said, I'm interested in doing a rental project, I think we would, we would show them where we had some properties available. I think we would also refer them to Bladeck. I think we would refer them to the Crowan County HRA, who have helped some of those projects along in the past. I think those are available. I think each, each entity can play a little bit of a part. I don't know that the entities, the government can provide all the pieces of the puzzle. I think we can be part of it, but I don't think we can provide all of them. And when we get involved, then it, then a lot of people like to shy away from those because strings are attached.
But what I hear Marcy saying is, could Bladeck be the entity that identifies or even recruits potential developers?
I think Bladeck can do that. I think the HRA can do that. I think we can be part of that puzzle. I think the county board can be part of the puzzle. I think anybody that, even if a property owner could be part of the puzzle.
I have a quick question. Were there ever any estimated project values tossed around for like what it would cost to do that apartment building, even a range, a variable range? Doesn't have to be an exact measure of dollars, but, you know, something that's, you know, were they, were they saying, well, this type of apartment complex or apartment building next to the clinic, for example, would be a $5 million project? Was anything like that ever said? You know, any indication?
Clinic provided us a building plans, and that's when we determined the value. This project never got to the level of the building permit. They provided plans, but no details.
Got you, take up projected potential costs. Got you, okay.
Well, I think it's probably time to move on. This, this will be a continued discussion.
Just, just one comment again. I think at the time that there was the discussions of the county plan, I think the interest rate was at 6% or close to that. Today, it's closer to 3. Huge difference in, in interest costs today.
I think that the one ago, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, is that workforce we're talking about, that $15 an hour employee going to be eligible for that loan?
I don't believe there, I think we're talking about homeownership at 3%. I think we're taking part of those folks that were renting and we're putting into, we're putting them into homeownership because of the interest rates. And the other segment that can afford the homeownership needs rental, where are they finding the rental?
Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is open forum number two. Would anyone like to give us some words of wisdom, please?
I'll apologize first of all for not choosing to leave you my name and address because it's a matter that's involved in the agreement. And the neighbor on the other side tried to talk to them, deal with them, and we became very contentious and angry. And the guy's saying, it's my property, I'll do what I want with it and that kind of thing. But it's regarding the next issue of short-term rentals.
Could I stop you? Patrick, would you have a recommendation of what to do under these circumstances?
We need not force someone to give their name and address. They are on TV, it will be on YouTube, so it makes it easier for us to write, write the name down and say so-and-so spoke on this topic. We're going to.
I'm not really requesting anything. I'm just wanting, I just happened, well, I've been in contact on the phone and by coming into the office with some of these people.
Please, please go ahead.
Just wanted to give you my experience and what we've been dealing with because it's due to the next topic coming up. And I just happened to see it just yesterday. And I just happened to see it, that just yesterday, that you were talking about this. And I'll start from way back. We've been up here for over twenty years. We moved up from the cities wanting peace and tranquility. Twenty years ago, it started where we ended up next to a Breezy Point rental pool, home, or house. And it was like living next to a front house. They would have, it slept sixteen people. They would, there would be groups of guys or groups of women. And throughout that, and Breezy was always, they would always say, call us. But who's getting up at two o'clock in the morning when our party is now carried over to next door? We're up turning lights on, calling Breezy Point, get somebody around. I, I had conversations with them. I said, you, you check them in at the front desk, you hand them, we're like a mile outside of the resort. And I said, you hand them the map to show them how to get there. And after that, you're not closing your guests, sweetheart. We had naked people in our yard, we had people urinating during broad daylight in our yard. We were constantly picking up cans and bottles. And then they drove over our sprinkler in the front yard. I'm sure I'm forgetting, there was one Saturday afternoon, it was a group of twenty guys. And by two o'clock, they had, at ten in the morning, I saw the keg roll up, I saw the yard games get set up. By two o'clock, I had heard the F-word no less than a hundred times. And I told my husband, I said, if we had grandchildren or children here, we would have even had to shut our windows because it was that bad. So, okay, fine, that was like, that went after like about twenty years or ten years, we put up with that. Then the, the people that owned the home moved up there, elderly couple moved up there. It was beautiful, it was great. Then the house on the other side of us sold. And the guy that come in there started renting out on VRBO and, I don't know, Home, I forget, HomeWait or whatever the other side was. And so we came in and, and he wasn't abiding by it four times a year. It was just a revolving door every weekend, somebody new coming through there. And so we came in and talked to the city and they did send him a letter. And he, and the next summer, kind of abided by it. Well, then in the meantime, the house on the other side, the elderly couple moved down here, sold the, sold the house. A young couple come in there and they're starting to rent out. They're renting out, they're not abiding by that, they've done a letter, they're not abiding by the letter, they're not. You know, and then like I said, the couple on the other side of them, tried to have a civil conversation with them and say, look, you know, the ordinance says X four, four times a year. And that's when he got the, it's my property, I'll do what I want with it, and I'm not breaking the law and all that kind of stuff. But it's just this revolving door. And then the, when I notice the county board, I don't, you'll have to excuse me, I don't know all the different procedures, but when the county ordinance that's going to come into effect in January, we could be looking at, when they say four people to a bedroom and then plus one, that's seventeen people on this side of us, and it could easily be another seventeen. We could be looking at thirty to thirty-four people just in our little three-house area that we would be having to put out with. And so my great fear is that somehow the four times a year, okay, I think we can handle that, but I'm afraid it's gonna go away. And so I started looking to discuss it, I don't know what the discussion will be, but it's just, I'm off.
Your, your input is valuable, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I will close open forum number two and move to other, which is short-term, short-term rental.
Oh, can I add one more thing? I'm sorry. The reason, like I said, the reason why I refrained from giving...
You can't be heard from there, man.
Oh, sorry. The reason why I refrained from giving my name was that, like I said, they're not abiding by, I've been talking to Jerry, they're not abiding by the, it just keeps going and they've got their, their site is booked out for the whole rest of the summer. And it becomes down to where they're not gonna play the game. I feel like to have one good neighbor, one neighbor that they think is, they're getting along with, that might be our only hope to say, can you, you know, like, maybe on your site for no part, this is a residential neighborhood, no large parties are, that kind of thing. So I want to kind of keep a good basis with them in case that's what our last resort is.
Do you ever call the police?
This, with this, the group, these people, we haven't. When it was, while the Breezy Point Resort told us, don't call the police, call us. And so that's what we did for years and years and years. But there have, there were times where the, I think the police had been called throughout the years, possibly. And I mean, right now, it's not, it's not bad. But like Jerry, like I was saying to Jerry earlier today, there's, there were five people upstairs and nine downstairs, and you get fourteen people together, they're gonna make noise, I mean, there's gonna be noise. Most of the time when you buy a home, you don't anticipate you're gonna be living next to fourteen people. And that could be happening on both sides of us at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
We'll move to short-term rental. Jerry, do you have anything?
Well, again, this is, again, it's a conversation that we, we need to have. I think the, the intent of this, more than anything else, was to give you an idea of the ordinance that the county passed, which, which we included in your packet, you do have a copy of that. I think from a, from our standpoint as a, as a staff, the rules that, that we have for vacation rental, more than four times per year, are a little bit different than the rules that the county is proposing. I think there's a, there's a conflict there because the county is proposing just to license folks without checking with the city to see what the city's rules and regulations are. I think we feel that there's going to be, if in fact that continues, we feel that there's going to be a conflict. I think that the, the county may give some of these people a license where we don't even allow them to happen. And they, I appreciate the, the lady's concern about the neighbor. I can tell you that that has been referred to the city attorney. We've gone as far as a staff can go as far as that situation is concerned. And, and we feel that the, the city attorney is better to, to handle that than we are. That, starting the conversation.
So the county's ordinance would supersede the city's?
I believe the county's intent is to license anybody that wants to get licensed if they meet their terms.
Where they're just after the fee is all they're after.
Pardon?
To me, it looks like they're just after a fee.
I, I think that's...
Maybe that's not the right way to look.
May or may not be, be correct. But it, it, there is a conflict between the city's rules versus theirs.
Are we allowed to have a, a city ordinance that's different from the county and would supersede theirs?
I believe, yes. I don't know who supersedes who, quite frankly. I think that's, that's where the conflict lies. Even if ours would supersede it, I think there's some folks that will go to directly to the county, get a license, come back and, and if we were to say, no, you're, you can't do that in Breezy, they're gonna say, but the county gave me a license, I can do that. I, I see a potential conflict there, quite frankly.
Well, I, I would like to go on the record, opposing this. I agree with you, Jerry, that it is a conflict. And I know that the city of Breezy Point is already facing uphill battle trying to enforce the current ordinance against VRBOs. I know that I've heard horror stories about a large number of vacationers in one residence overwhelming the current septic systems, the, the private septic system that's for that residence. And I can only imagine what this woman is going through, you know, being surrounded on both sides. I wish there was some way that we could enforce to protect the, the residents from, from people that could just as easily go down to the county and obtain a license and, and, and basically blow right past what the city has in place currently.
I would hope that if, in fact, the county is going to license those, that they would check with the jurisdiction that they're in to see if they have any rules or regulations for or against those type of things. The other thing I would caution you about is, we, we like to say VRBO and we like to say airbus and all these other terms. The bottom line is, it's really short-term rentals of private property. VRBO and, and airhub and, and those type of things, they're vehicles, they're rental agencies, basically. But it's still the private property owners that are doing the renting of those properties.
I stand corrected on the short-term rental leasing licensing.
No, I, I just, you know, it isn't only VRBO. There are some folks that are doing this by themselves. You know, they probably have enough repeat customers. The other thing I would tell you is that the resort, as this lady has stated, actually promotes some of that.
Promotes short-term?
Short-term rentals of, of private houses. They have actually, they have a, a book of, of houses that they rent for individual people, they clean for. They, they, they're the rental agents.
Is that like an affiliate program or something where, you know, the resort has said, hey, you know, you're marketing your house, why don't we manage that for you? And they get a fee, they take a percentage?
Well, I'm sure. I don't think anybody does anything for nothing.
But then Jerry, is that a short-term rental or is that...
Absolutely, it's a short, if it's more than four times a year, according to our ordinance, it is a short-term rental. You, as an individual, can rent your house where it's located, four times per year. No questions asked.
But if the resort gets involved?
Then it would...
Which I know they do, that unit could be rented every single day or every single weekend with no limitations, correct?
They, because of where it's located, our ordinance may prohibit that?
It's gotta be zone resort?
Well, it needs to be, it's supposed to be resort, zone resort commercial, commercial. I believe those are the only ones.
So R3, R2, you cannot...
Since nineteen, since two thousand and thirteen, those have been eliminated. What they did allow is for those that had been doing it over the years to grandfather them through. But you, if, if you were to buy this house next door and say, I wanted to do a short-term rental, I want to do a, a short-term rentals more than four times per year. If you came in here, we would tell you that it's not possible to do because the zoning isn't correct for you.
I think this, including the enforcement portion, I think this could also become a nuisance that would overwhelm our current resources. You know, emergency vehicles, they mentioned in here that parking, you know, has to, it cannot exceed where emergency vehicles could not pass through. But they're also scolding any type of, they, they call it false or intentional reporting of a violation. But the county is almost saying that we will fine you for being overly concerned, almost. Based on the wording, that's what I take away from it. I really, I really can't say anything good about, about this.
And I'm concerned about two things out of this. One being, I think if we go forward with something that's broader, we're gonna see a lot more of this coming up in the area. I think there's a lot of people, I know right now, there are a lot of people that are not renting out their homes for short-term rentals that want to, but they are trying to abide by current law. And so I think this could expand, should this be something that goes into effect, I think we'll see more of it. Then my concern there would be our police department because there is a lot of, of course, issues when you have short-term rentals. It's vacation land, they come up to relax and do what they want to do. And so I think the enforcement would be, now, is the city of Breezy Point going to need a extended law officer presence in the area to accommodate that? Who pays for that? Do we get fees for that? You know, is that something that will start to be a burden? And then the other question is, you know, if somebody does raise a concern, it's supposed to be notified within an hour, whoever the property manager is, and who's gonna maintain that library? You know, if, if somebody did have a complaint, how are they, how would a police officer know who to get in contact to within an hour to get that resolved? Or is it something that's gonna be an ongoing issue? And there's just a lot of like those little things that I see adding up to be more of a burden on our community at this point.
Actually...
It's difficult for me to be involved. Stan, can I give one more thing regarding that? There's a thing in there that says, three, if you get three valid, or validated complaints in a certain period of time, then you'll lose your license. And the thing with, that happens with that is, okay, they get one in June, maybe they get one in July. By the time they get that third validated complaint, and it has to be validated complaint, summer's over, they lose their license, they don't care, they can reapply come January. I said, you mean you lose your license permanently? They said, no, no, just for a year. And so it's kind of meaningless, you know? I mean, unless they were to wrap them all up within that first week or two, but that generally doesn't seem like the way it would be, you know? By the time they get that third complaint, by the time anything's done. And then I was talking earlier today with Jerry, and Jerry said, like, if you were to try to take it to court, with this COVID thing, the court systems are all pretty much locked down. That whole thing could be way in the future. I mean, I just wanted to add that.
It is, is one of the issues tonight, what, to review what the county is putting in place. And then, do we have the right to say we don't want to be involved? And if we don't want to be involved with it, then I'm assuming our city attorney would have to tell us how not to be involved with what the county's telling us to do.
I think ultimately, it's gonna come down to that.
And then, that if we don't want to be involved with it, then we'll have to have our own stuff. And then we will have, as you said, have to enforce it. So Pat, we had a call up two a.m.
Well, I think there's, 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 there's one advantaging to license some of these things. And the, the big advantage is you know who to call. And, and it gives the police officers an ability to, to not only deal with the, the renter, but the rentor. That's, that's the real advantage to that. The problem is, where do you want them to happen? Do you want them to even continue?
Patrick?
Tracy has a nail on the head. The idea was to have you guys look at what the county ordinance was. It's been talked about, rumor involved, so have it in front of you. Our portion of the ordinance is two pages, so we'll put that in next period. I mean, you guys all have a copy of it, it's just concentrate on what's here tonight. I think we had a good discussion, given us some direction and what your thoughts are and concerns are. And then next month, we'll look at what the city's is, see how we want certain important steps to go forward and recommend to the city council what you want to. Again, this is not one of those, okay, we've made the decision tonight, it's all never discussed again, that's the least of the thing at all. You guys are getting paid, you're working for your money this time.
If, if I might just ask you, I, I, for me to continue thinking about this, I, I have to know the difference in my head. The difference between the resort renting out a home?
There, there is no difference. It is, it is just that the resort becomes a rental agent for the individual. They are no different than VRBO. VRBO is a rental agent, that's all they are. VRBO is a rental agent, that's all they are.
But my understanding is that you can only rent that property four times a year?
Depending upon where it's located.
I didn't, I don't know if there's something different, I don't know. But when we first got, like, you could go right now and look on the Breezy Point Resort site, and they've got about twelve houses that are scattered throughout the community that they've had for a long time. And that's, you caught, they place, the people that call the resort, I, there might be some, I don't, that he knows that I don't know about, but that was the only understanding I had. And then, when, it was, the couple owned the house, but then they would get like a forty, sixty, or split, or when Breezy rented it out. Well, then when they moved up into the house, the understanding I had was when it comes off that rental pool for, it had like three years or something like that, it can't go back on that rental pool. And at some point, they made it so that Breezy Point can't pull any more houses into that rental pool.
But am I correct, those houses can be rented daily?
Yeah.
Year round?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it sounds to me like it's a limited number, whatever the number is, it's fixed and it can't get bigger.
I don't think so, I mean, I'm not a pro, I'm not professional with this, but I don't believe so.
We-
Well, I wouldn't go to Breezy Point Resort tomorrow and say, hey, put my house in your rental pool, I don't think it works anyway.
No, you're not supposed to be able to. Depending upon where it's located, what the zoning of the property is, then you make a determination whether that's an allowable activity in those, in that zoning district. It's somewhat complicated because it's been going on for so many years. There were a lot of them that have been grandfathered in, even though the zoning is against them. And Breezy Point Resort has a history of renting individual units to folks on a short-term basis. That's just part of their business.
Was I right in the fact that, you know, when you said grandfathered in, if they, if they sold that home or took it off the rental market, then I don't think they can put it back on after, is it three years or something like that?
Typically, and I'm going to use Mr. Donovan as an example, because he uses me all the time. If, if Mr. Donovan bought a house over here that, on the lake, that had been rented, short-term, periodically or within the last year, and going forward, he could go in, he could buy that house and continue to rent it because there was been no break in the activity. Now, if he bought a house that had been rented two years ago, but had been out of the rental pool, had been rented on a regular basis for at least a year, he could not go back in there and re-rent it again legally.
Can I call Breezy Point and have my house that I just bought put on their rental pool?
If in fact it had been rented before. Yes, you could. You could, you could ask-
And then I got to start all over with you.
And, and I would probably tell you the zoning is not right for it, you can only do it four times a year.
Okay, that, that's helpful.
But when you talk about, there's no difference between the rental, between the resort renting a private individual's house for them, or VRBO. They're basically, they're rental agents.
But our ordinance says that you can only rent it four times a year.
Depending upon where you're located at.
Mr. Chair, if I can ask staff a question. Um, if you're going to rent it more than four times a year, don't you have to be the landowner and the renter? Isn't that an ordinance that you have to be the, the owner?
If, if you were a new person, and, and I'll use the example of the, it used to be a hair salon down here and, right off of the highway. Um, I think, uh-
She actually came before this committee to-
It came before this committee for an interim use permit. The interim use permit can determine whether, or put conditions on. It's no different than a conditional use permit. That happened to be in the right zoning, it was in a commercially zoned area, it was an allowable activity with an interim use. That is the only one we have that has an interim use permit. Everything else that's out there is either in the R4 or the R3, you know, the commercial district, or they've been pre-existing. It's, it's not a, it's, it's not a simple fix.
Do we know how long we've, do we know how quickly the county's going to act on this?
I believe there, that takes effect on January first.
That is Friday one, yeah.
So this is a done deal, the county, the county has passed this and-
I liken it to a floodplain map. We have our city map, zoning map, and then there's an overlay map. It's not that it's one or the other, you have to do both. If you're going to be a property owner and be legal as a short-term rental in Breezy Point. You guys have to decide if that's what you want to keep doing, because it is going to be confusing as all get out to the problem. Or they're going to claim that it's confusing too.
It's the way to get around it.
Well, that's part of your system job.
So, so we're going to have, next month, we're going to have, we're going to talk about what Breezy Point, the city of Breezy Point's rules are, is that correct? And then we hope to ultimately conclude with a recommendation to whoever we need to recommend it to, that it goes to our city attorney to tell the county to go fly cat.
Our city attorney might say, jump on the wagon with them too, who knows?
Well, get his attorney.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, what I thought I just heard you say is potentially they're going to be regulated by two entities, the county and Breezy Point. The county's going to license them, but they have to abide by our ordinances.
Correct, we were here first, let's put it that way. The city of Breezy Point was here first, gave directions to people on what they had to do. That's why Jerry contacted the county, I contacted the county commissioners and said, how is this going to work? I mean, when we have the, the campground and they want to build a deck, we don't just issue a permit, we require that they go to the campground first, get a sign off from them, then they can come in and get a deck or a three season porch. We don't just say, oh, whatever, they want, it's no big deal, we just work with them. And the county board just said, well, that's what we're going to do.
The, the county's ordinance makes it more difficult to deal with.
Are there other cities that have, uh, short-term rental that are in the same situation as we are in our-
In Crowe County, yes. We were not the first to have our ordinance before the county adopted ours, I think it was 2018. Five other additional cities adopted an ordinance, Brainerd, Baxter, Old Town.
Do we have any idea how they're dealing with the news?
We can try to get that information for you too.
It was real contentious, you know, when the county did enact this thing.
Well, I think you, it was contentious because you had the, uh, investors and people that were doing it on one side, and you had a lot of folks that were basically saying, you're taking my rights away from me. You're taking my, my right to rent my property, you're taking that away from me. And you have no business regulating my rights.
And then they had a whole bunch of people who were unhappy about this going on next to them.
Well, yeah, you got the neighbor portion of that too.
But if you're renting your property, you are now doing commerce and you're making income off of it, that's not residential.
The, that was the other thing that happened in this whole process, is that the county wanted to make sure they could, or they were told by the state revenue department, that if somebody is deriving a revenue out of that, uh, the rental, or short-term rental, they should be classified as a commercial activity and their, their tax rate would be different.
So that would change their, their property taxes, or that would increase them, put them in a position of accountability, and ultimately open the door for the county to charge them, to get a fee on that activity, more or less.
The state gets a fee too, don't they?
Pardon?
I believe the state also gets a fee.
I, if it, I think if it requires a state license, it would.
I know a friend of mine that was doing it, and he got caught. He ended up paying it to the state.
Am I in a meeting, no, that's just, but property taxes are still primarily the local?
Yeah, but I don't know, he had to pay something into the state, he said.
I, I think another good question to have answered for, from staff for your packet next month would be, if we did something similar to the county, can the city be more restrictive than what the county is? And I think that'd be something that we'd want legal advice on, on, on doing so.
I think that's really important, Michael, because my sense right now is we probably aren't going to be prepared to say, well, we're just going to accept what the county is doing here. I mean, that, that, that's going to be just fine for Breezy Point. Anything else?
No, I like, I like, I like defining additional parameters if that's what it's going to come down to.
Patrick, is, is, is that direction from us, okay?
Yes.
Do we need to make a motion or anything?
No, no.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, I will adjourn immediately.